All right. Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Wyoming City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel, accessible from the city's website. If you would like to address City Council, please come up to the microphone to speak. The audio will not pick up for those watching from YouTube if you do not speak into the microphone. So tonight, there are five items on the consent agenda: approval of the March 17th, 2025 City Council Meeting Minutes, approval of the April 7th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, a proclamation declaring April 23rd, 2025 is Arbor Day in Wyoming, a resolution honoring the services of Sarah Stankorb Taylor, serving on the Environmental Storageship Commission, and a resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the transit infrastructure programs and to execute the contracts as required. Do I hear a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second? Having been moved and seconded to approve these consent agenda items, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. So are there any questions or comments on the special reports? Then we'll now hear a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The city is seeking applicants to fill an unexpired term for Councilmember Grant Hoffman, who resigned his position on April 11th, 2025. Residents interested in being considered should send a letter of interest or resume to me by April 25th at 5:00 p.m. They can email it to me. My email is rherzog@Wyomingohio.gov. They can mail it to the city building here at 800 Oak Avenue, or they can drop it in person here at the city building as well. And again, we need to receive those by April 25th at 5:00 p.m. We will then evaluate the resumes and letters of interest that we have received. We'll hand those out to council. And then at the committee, the whole meeting night, we will have a special council meeting, and that is on May 5th. And at that special council meeting, council members will consider the candidates and make a selection as who will be the next city council member. So any questions about that process also can be directed to me or any of the council members. There is still plenty of free mulch available with free delivery. So again, our leaf mulch program, just so everybody understands, the way that works is in the fall, all those wonderful trees that we have drop all their leaves, and we sweep them up and take them to the back of Oak Park. And we turn that into leaf mulch. And it's a great recycling program. And it can continue to be that great recycling program if people take the free mulch. What happens will start to happen is less people are taking the free mulch, we then have to get rid of the mulch so that we have room for the next year. So again, we want it to be a recycled effort, so the more people that we can get to take that free mulch, let us know. We'll deliver it free here in Wyoming, but if anybody wants to go back there and load up a truck, they're welcome to it. Okay? Any questions on that can be found at the website, or they can call the city building with any questions. They can also order it through the city's website. The free delivery. The Family Aquatic Center opens for the season May 24th. Warm weather is almost upon. Phase one part of the project is starting next week. So Barrett paving will begin the local street improvement program next Monday. They will start on Ashley Lane and Camberly Drive, and then move to Rolling Hills. Then they will proceed from north to south. The paper will generally be two days behind the milling operations. So we explain the process for the roadwork, and any other questions, you can reach out to the city offices. But again, that'll start next week, and you'll see that equipment milling those streets. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. So are there any council committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? Are there any special committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, then we've reached that point in our meeting where a citizen may express an opinion, make a statement, address a concern, or ask a question on any subject that is not otherwise on the agenda. Comments will be recorded into the minutes and passed along to be addressed by the appropriate staff or city council committee as needed. This portion of the meeting is not for city council to provide responses to a citizen comment, but to hear what the citizen has to say. If you wish a response from the city to your concern or request for information, please be sure to leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave the meeting. And as a reminder, please state your name and address before making your comments to city council. Is there anyone present that would like to bring an item not otherwise on the agenda before city council? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to our next item of business. And our first item of business is the juvenile court update on Hillcrest School. And we welcome Ms. Liz Igoe and Ms. Rika Thacker.
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for giving the court an opportunity to present today. My name is Liz Igoe, and I'm the Court Administrator for the Hamilton County Juvenile Court. With me today is Rika Thacker. She is Project Manager for the Hillcrest Project. Mayor, council members, city manager, and residents of Wyoming, thank you for the opportunity to share the updates that we have to provide to you about Hillcrest today. As I stand before you today, I wish that I had more definitive answers that I could be sharing with you at this time. Unfortunately, last week, I received information from the county administrator, Mr. Aludo, that due to the uncertainty with the federal funding at this time, the funding that the county had designated for the reopening of Hillcrest through the Children's Services Levy has been placed on pause by the county. We are naturally very disappointed, but we certainly understand the challenges that the county is facing at this time and the uncertainty with the federal funding. Hillcrest, we believe, for the court and the county, is an essential program that we hope to bring forward for families in Hamilton County and for the community. But to do so, we need to make sure that it's a sustainable project and one that can be done with safety in mind for the community. So for now, the county has made a determination that Hillcrest will be paused until a determination related to the Children's Services Levy in November of 2026 can be made by the voters. That does not mean that as a court and a county, that we are pausing everything and will not be making attempts to pursue moving Hillcrest onto the county. It just means that the funding for this has become more uncertain. As some of you may be aware, last year, Governor DeWine's Juvenile Justice Task Force issued a 26-point proposal for the overhaul of the juvenile justice system. As part of that task force recommendations, one of the things that they recommended to the governor, and the governor has been moving forward with, is the idea that there should be a Community Corrections Facility, or CCF, placed in the three largest counties in Ohio, of which Hamilton is one. So in December, we were requested by the state of Ohio to submit a bid along with Cuyahoga County and Franklin County to be the first Community Corrections Facility, new Community Corrections Facility, under the governor's 26-point plan. We are currently in that bidding process. We do a presentation on May 8th up at the State House to Department of Youth Services and other members of the state to determine what the order will be for the Community Corrections Facilities. A Community Correction Facility, for those who may be unfamiliar with the term and what its purpose is, is essentially a step-down facility from Department of Youth Services, which is the juvenile prison system. In Hamilton County, essentially, our Hillcrest Training School has run as our local Community Corrections Facility. We just never had the designation from the state because we were funding it solely as a standalone entity as a county. But the target population who attend Community Corrections Facilities and the mission of Hillcrest is how juvenile court in Hamilton County has utilized the Hillcrest Facility for all the years that the court has run that programming. Now, in full transparency, we in Hamilton County think that we have a very slight chance of being the recipient of the first Community Corrections Facility. We don't think that this is going to be a viable option for us this year to move forward, but we will not have any certainties or answers from the state until later this year. When we have that information, we will certainly share it with the board and provide you with any information as we're receiving it from the state. Currently, we continue to make plans to move on to the Hillcrest campus, although our data is uncertain. Ms. Thacker is going to be able to review with you where we are as a county in terms of the construction that is currently taking place on the campus, and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to where we are programmatically at this time. I do thank you for your time this evening, and I do wish that I had more definitive answers to provide you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rika Thacker. I'm the Project Manager with Hamilton County's Facilities Department. Currently, we started our renovation a little over a month ago, back late March. Thus far, we've began demolition within nine of the buildings on Hillcrest Campus, that being the school, admin, dining and rec. And four cottages. Is that eight or nine? I think that's all of them. We are projected to be done sometime in September with those renovations. That includes plumbing upgrades, electrical upgrades, HVAC, new windows, new roofs on the nine buildings, eight or nine buildings, and upgrading the security features like cameras and card access throughout the facility. It'll get new flooring and new finishes throughout as well, and that will bring us to a point where we'd be operational according to court standards.
Great. So is this a good time for if council has any questions? Awesome. Anybody have any questions? I'd like to start.
I have a question. Did I understand that the facility operated as a correctional facility, but it was operating under a different name? And what's the difference between the two, the name versus its actual operation?
I need a little clarity from you in what facility. Are you speaking of Hillcrest itself? Yes. So Hillcrest has been a standalone project in Hamilton County for its entire existence. A Community Corrections Facility is one that is run by the state in conjunction with the county. During the time that the court operated Hillcrest, we were utilizing that campus essentially as the equivalent, as if we had applied for and received a Community Corrections Facility in terms of the demographics of the kids that we were putting on the campus, the type of non-secured Community Corrections Facility that is being run. The difference is there are two different parts in the law. One is a Community Corrections Facility, which is what the state has asked Hamilton County to apply for. Hillcrest in its traditional form is a community residential treatment facility. So it's similar in nature. There are some different rules that do apply to the two, but in our application to the state, nothing changed with what the court and the county had proposed, and we discussed with this council in terms of our proposal for Hillcrest. So what we did was, as you're aware, it's a three-part plan that the county and the court have with our traditional criminogenic beds. We had our mental health beds and our respite beds. We essentially took the portion of our criminogenic beds and used that bid that we received and sent that to the state as our proposal for our Community Corrections Facility. So the kids that we want to have on campus, everything that we have discussed about how Hillcrest should function in Hamilton County remains the same. It's a funding difference, whether or not the state can pay for that. Now, if the state selects Hamilton County and we move as the first CCF, and it is, according to the governor's plan, all three counties will be required at some point to have a Community Corrections Facility, we would continue with the Hillcrest Project. That may allow the county to review the Children's Services Levy in a different way because it will substantially reduce the cost. There will be some cost-sharing savings that the county would experience if we had the Community Corrections Facility on the same campus with the other programs that we were previously planning to put on the campus. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
So I have a question. So I know you said that you don't expect to be the first county to be selected. If you were surprised, would you be able to accept it? Would you have the funding that you could open?
So the Community Corrections Facility would be completely funded by the state.
Okay.
The cost benefit for the county is one. This was a project that originally they were planning on funding all through the county without state dollars. It's about a savings of about $4.5 to $5 million to the county, and I'm not exact on those figures. That's just my last recollection, that they would be able to have the county pay for. Then according to how the process is established, if we had the Community Corrections Facility, which is our typical criminogenic kids that we've always had on that campus, together with our respite beds and possibly mental health beds, there would be a 60/40 split for costs related to the facility that would be shared between the state and the county.
And the state would be 60?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
As the current renovations are ongoing, what, if this were, when would this presumably open?
We weren't projecting to open until 2026, but the project itself should be about wrapped up in September this year.
This September? And September, or in 2026, what level, what's the range of offenses that we would expect the youth to be back on campus with?
So first, we have a firm commitment from the court that before any child arrives on campus, that we will be formulating a community advisory board, and we will ask for membership from Wyoming, also from Springfield Township, and as well as Woodlawn to participate as we create the process for moving kids on campus. The children who would be on campus are the same population that we've always been discussing. These would be felony-level children. And as I believe that I have expressed in prior meetings before, the criteria is developed by the court. It is vetted through our probation department, and then one of our judges would make a decision about which child gets on that campus. It is not a charge-specific determination, which means you may have a higher charge, but they're looking at risk factors of the child, if that makes sense. So I can't tell you a specific charge is never going to get on that campus, but they are reviewing the criteria, and they're looking at the risk factors for that child in determining whether or not an open campus in that setting is an appropriate place for that child or not.
Thank you.
Would that mean, then, that you're changing what your previous criteria were for children being eligible? So the advisory board would be, if there was already a set of criteria that were being used for the children who were there in the past, would the advisory board be changing their requirements?
The advisory board would not be changing the requirements of who gets on campus. What we would be doing is we would be working with the community to make sure that the community is comfortable with the way that the court is managing the property, that you have an opportunity to speak to the contract providers who will be providing the services on campus, that you are aware of what is happening on campus and activities and things that we do that the community has an opportunity to be aware of and weigh in on what it is that we are doing on that campus. But who gets on and off that campus has always been something that has been the exclusive purview of the juvenile court to decide who gets there. One difference that I will let everyone know with the Community Corrections Facility, and this is part of the reason, excuse me, why as a county, we were previously reluctant to do this, is we do lose some control of kids who get on that campus, meaning if we have less than 90% capacity, we have to be 90% full all the time, or as a court, we are required to consider kids from other counties. Now, ultimately, the process that every child goes through to get on campus would be the same, and our judges would have the discretion to say no to any child that was proposed by another county. But that is part of the reason why the CCF is a little bit different than what we originally were planning, because we will have to consider kids from out of county on that campus, and then our judges will have the final decision about whether or not they're there.
Do the current renovations have a fence included on the campus?
Yeah, currently, we have a fence going on three sides. The street front on Bonham will not have a fence, and it's, we're going through variances right now, but it's currently projected to be an eight-foot tall fence.
When you, so when you say three sides, what about the, what's the fourth side?
The fourth side's the street front on Bonham. We, I think the courts made a decision with surrounding communities that they didn't want it to appear like a prison or jail. So it gives it more of a friendlier approach.
I can say from this community, I'm not sure, I don't think we had an opportunity to weigh in on that, but security was one of our big concerns, and understanding how the facility would be secure, as well as the impact on the community if there is runaways, which we've had in the past. To my knowledge, and so, is that something that you can share with us? Because I can see this community is probably more concerned with security than aesthetics.
So I know that the camera systems that we are upgrading to will have sensors that help direct the onsite security to which way and directions that the kids are going. It also, we're updating all the card readers and security for the doors for the facility. They won't be able to exit a door without a staff member opening it for them, aside from emergency egress, and that's delayed.
Is that a new feature? Are those new features? Okay. And is there any change in the level of personnel, security personnel that will be provided on the campus?
No, our intention, well, actually, it's an increase is what we proposed to the state. We added five more security officers to our bid. Now, I can't predict what the state is going to do, but we did ask for five additional security officers when they asked us to submit for the CCF.
And is that just based on the CCF? If that doesn't go through, will there not be five additional security officers?
That would be if the CCF, yes, that's correct. The otherwise, and let me just check with my chief of security. I believe our proposal is 20 for the running of the entire facility. With the Community Corrections Facility, we added another five for a total of 25 officers to have coverage on campus.
I don't want to monopolize. I just have one more question about the CCF, and I want to make sure I heard you right. So the population of folks in the facility does not change based on if the CCF is awarded and moved to Hillcrest. Is that correct?
That's correct, from the court's perspective, because we have control over who gets on that campus. We're never going to put a child on that campus that we don't feel is appropriate to be on that campus. These are kids, essentially, in any given year, Hamilton County has eight to 11 children who may end up either in a residential treatment facility or at Department of Youth Services who otherwise would have qualified for a Community Corrections Facility that we did not place for a variety of reasons. And I have no reason to believe that our judges will be making a different calculation than they currently do.
Are the numbers at all changing in terms of the number of beds or number of people?
Actually, we're reducing. The original plan for the criminogenic youth was 36 beds and three cottages. The presentation that we have been asked to present by the state is we've been asked to reduce that number of children. So we will be making our presentation on May 8th requesting that the Community Corrections Facility be for 22 youth, so it will be two cottages instead of three. The other children who will be on campus, the respite beds, the 66 beds, and the potential for the mental health beds remains the same.
And then, I know you talked a little bit about the other counties. I know previous residents were from out of state. Is that a thing with this new proposal?
Only county.
Only county?
State.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we could have students from outside of Hamilton County, but not outside of Ohio?
Ohio residents, yes.
Okay. And then, I know you had originally put in a bid for providers, like, I know that probably has changed in the landscape of things. Are you going to rebid or redo that?
So we've been in discussion with the providers that we are hoping to be able to work with on campus. We are asking for an additional extension of the request for proposal on the original Hillcrest Project, because our extension ends April 25th. I don't have from the county how long the new extension will be, but all of the service providers who have issued bids to work with the court on this have agreed to stay in the running.
And then with the changes in numbers with cottages, I'm assuming each cottage would house a different gender? Is that like something?
It would be, yes, gender, and actually, it would be program-specific in terms of there's two horseshoes on campus. One of the horseshoes would be exclusively for respite kids and our low-level JFS-type of kids who are on campus. The other would be where we would keep the criminogenic kids, so there is separation. There's also requirements as part of the statute that there be in sound separation. Part of the work that's happening at the school is to put in dividers in the two wings, so the Community Corrections kids will be completely separate on a wing of the school from the other children on campus.
And just to note, I know we talked this last Wednesday, but also to make sure that everybody else is aware, that Springfield Township is putting another, I looked it up today, 184 new homes a block west of the facility. So that will make a change to traffic flow and just the population density up there. So security will be, you know, even more important.
I just want, I just want to thank Ms. Igoe and Ms. Thatcher, Thatcher?
Thatcher, yeah.
Thank you for coming down. It's very generous. And obviously, the security measures you're taking are significant, so thanks for being responsive to us. The only question I had was really about that fence. So the third, the fourth side, the open side, which jurisdiction is that one abiding? On Bonham? Springfield Township?
Yeah.
It runs along Bonham Road.
Come up to-
Security and perspective.
Come up to the microphone, so the people from home can-
Security and perspective. The fence, the fenced portion that won't be there is on the bottom road. That's also where the security building is located. So at any given time, you're going to have five to seven officers on duty, which is far more than most jurisdictions they have on duty in any given time when it comes to law enforcement. The officers are
We remember that part. It's really the fence. So the fence is abiding Springfield
also-
Township. I just, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't know the answer before the meeting, but we thought it was all going to be fenced in. But, so that one side will remain open?
It's never been part of the proposal. It's always been a three-sided fence, and that was at the request of the community, that you guys wanted something more secure. There was never a proposal that was submitted by the county or the court that fenced in the entire property. It was always three sides.
Can you repeat that part about what the community wanted?
When we came to meet with Wyoming and with Woodlawn and Springfield Township, we heard feedback that there was interest in the community to try and provide more security, especially from Wyoming specifically. This community was interested in fencing, which is why the proposal went in for the fencing. But to my knowledge, there was never a discussion that I'm aware of where the property was going to be fenced all four ways. The idea was to control traffic because the concern was runners and kids getting off campus. So we wanted a directed area to be able to direct them to the front of our building where our security would be, so we know where the kids are heading.
And who are the, you mentioned aesthetics, who are the aesthetics favoring, I guess?
Well, I haven't been in those meetings, so I'm going to let Ms. Thacker address that, but I know there've been some concerns from Springfield Township.
Just the style of the fencing? Is that what you're asking?
No, just having the fence. It sounded like the fencing was not going to be on Bonham Road because of an aesthetic concern.
I was told that it was a matter of not appearing to be a correctional-type facility. I could be wrong in my opinion on that, but that's my interpretation of what I was told.
And that was, from what you're understanding, is it was, Springfield Township was requesting?
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't think that's correct. I apologize. So it's, I'm not positive what the answer is, but what I can tell you is, from what I know, the county and the court have never had a discussion with fencing in all four sides of the property. What we had discussions were, we're fencing in three sides of the property to drive traffic to the front gate to hopefully prevent kids from running off campus and interfering with things that are happening in the community. It was never intention, and it's never been the intention of the court, for this to be a secured facility. This is a non-secured facility. That is how Hillcrest has been run traditionally. That is the intention of the court for it to remain a non-secured facility. It is a difference in the type of child who gets on a non-secured Community Corrections Facility versus a secured facility, which is- versus a secured facility, which is why Hamilton County's bid is for a non-sealed facility versus a secured facility. So I don't know that I answered your question.
Maybe, maybe this helps, the other community corrections facilities in Ohio, are they also-
There's a combination. There are some that are secured facilities, and there are some that are non-sealed facilities.
Okay.
Non-sealed facilities, such as we are proposing, have limits on who's entitled to be on campus. It has age restrictions from 18. Is the oldest that you can be on campus. A secured facility is different. It houses a different population, and it allows children on campus up to age 21.
Okay.
So that's why our bid was for the non-sealed facility.
Got it.
Okay, that helps?
Any other questions?
I have one more.
Sure. Sorry, I turned myself off. You mentioned the community advisory board. Can you explain more about what that will look like and how that will operate, please?
So I really don't want to misspeak on this, so I don't want to say something that we haven't fed it out. I can just tell you that as a court, and from Judge Blum and Judge DeGraff and Reed, before we put a child on campus, we will be talking with the community. We will be there with our selected providers. Once we get to the point of contracting, we want them to come out, explain to the community what their goals are, how they intend for things to be managed on campus, to have advisors from the surrounding community to help them dictate and direct what and how programming looks like as they move about that campus.
When do you anticipate that we would be engaged in that? And would that be prior to the opening of the facility, regardless if it's the original plan or the CCF?
It will be before any child ever steps foot on campus. It would, our weight now is determining funding, and then we need to move to contracting. Once we get to the point of being able to contract with the providers that we've been in discussions with, that would be the point that we would be reaching out to the communities and immediately setting up the process for the advisory board. There are a lot of pieces in this project that haven't been fully fleshed out yet, because we're not sure what all the components are going to be.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And the last question, and I believe you did say this, I just want to reiterate, make sure I heard it correctly, is the original plan, when is the deadline or the timeline for that to open, should the funding and the change with the CCF not occur?
Originally, we were hoping to be on campus, the construction for Phase 1, this is a two-phase project for the construction. Phase 1 construction is supposed to be done by the end of September. We were hoping to be on campus and open in November with the respite kids from Jobs and Family Services was our original goal.
2025?
2025, until my discussions last week with the county.
Okay.
And now we're pausing everything at this moment.
Okay.
Because we may be moving forward, if we get state funding, then it would be the flip of what we intended in terms of who would get on campus first. It would be the community corrections children through the CCF. And that still is a potential target date, in my mind, of November of 2025, just depending upon what happens with the state.
Sure, thank you. And you'll learn that, you said?
Next couple of months, hopefully. We present May 8th, and all three counties have to present. And then, I'm assuming that they'll let us know within 60 days of that. They were supposed to let us know in February, but they, they didn't have a solution by then.
Well, good luck with your presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And thank you very much, and if there's interest in the court coming back out and speaking more on this project, we are always happy to come out and speak to the community. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an aggregation program agreement with a supplier to be recommended by Energy Alliances Incorporated to supply electric to the Wyoming Electric Aggregation Program and any subsequent agreements to reduce costs as needed. And I turn it over to you, Rusty, first, before Kathy Dieters, right?
So I'm going to ask Kathy Dieters to come on up from Energy Alliance, just to give counsel a heads-up what this is. Again, we have a energy aggregate for electric and gas, and this is about our electric aggregate. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor. City Manager and Counsel, thank you for having me. Currently, the City of Wyoming has a program in place that expires in June of 2025. And the current electric aggregation program is set at a fixed price of 6.71 cents. It will expire in July. And unfortunately, there is an increase that's going to impact every ratepayer. Whether you are a resident or a commercial ratepayer, energy prices have increased. There's two components that go to pricing energy. One is the power, which trades in the open market, and the other component is capacity. And the capacity is what basically is like an insurance policy that's set by the electric grid operators to ensure reliability, to make sure there's enough power being generated to meet the demand. Currently, we're in a situation in Ohio that there is more demand and not enough generation to meet that demand. And most of it is due to a lot of the AI data centers, electrification. Everybody has more equipment in their homes, and so that puts stress and demand on the grid. Those prices are set on a yearly basis by the PJM, and PJM runs the whole grid for Ohio. And there is an increase of that portion of your price that's going into your per kilowatt-hour price. And currently, with the 6.71 cents that you guys are locked in at until July, about a penny, a little less than two cents is part of capacity. And in June, it's going to increase to over three and a half cents. So not only is the market increased since you guys contracted in 2023, now the capacity prices have increased. So we did an initial bid on an indicative price for the city. You guys are under 100% renewable energy. And that price came in a little under 10 cents. Duke Energy is, has just finished their auction, so we know what their price to compare is. The price to compare for Duke is going to be around 9.8 cents. And I'm sure you say, why do you want to execute an agreement for 10 cents? That's a good question. The only thing I can say is that what we were hoping to do is price just the default regular energy rate, and then give the community an option to opt-in to the renewable piece of it. Renewable energy adds about 10 cents to your price. So it's, or I guess it's about, when you talk a may watt hour, it's a little different. But when you're talking per kilowatt hour, it's, it's well over 10 cents for the renewable portion. So basically, we won't have enough time to execute any kind of a price for the next meeting. With the way the electric aggregation program works, you have to send letters out to the community. They have 45 days to respond for opt-outs. So there's just not enough time for us to do anything before the May 19th meeting. So we're asking the council to be able to allow the city manager to execute an agreement if we get below the Duke's price to compare. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
So I, this is just clarifications, I'm doing the math as you're talking. So no matter what, even to go from our current 6.71 to the 9.8 at Duke, that's, that's almost like a 40% price increase.
Correct, yes.
And that's going to be quite significant to everybody.
Now, I will say, these programs are still set that, you know, you can terminate them at any time. We are recommending only a 12-year contract, or a 12-month contract? Sorry. And the reason being is the PJM sets those capacity rates for a year, and auction, and Duke's auction is set for a year. So with where the market is and the higher capacity, we're just recommending that you do a 12-month contract.
Great, are there any questions? No? Okay, thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay, so the- So the resolution-
Can I provide?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just a reminder for all the councils. So what you're doing tonight is you're just giving me authorization to enter into a contract once we get a recommendation from Energy Alliance. We don't have that at this moment, so-
Upon May.
It will come later, but again, that would be what that is at this point. And then if it is some change or a different term, the ability to negotiate a lower, if there is, you know, if we end up not doing 12 months, if we do six months or something like that, giving me the ability to do that without coming back to council again. Again, the idea would be to save the community money, to put the community in a position to be able to get lower cost. That would be the goal.
Any questions, Rusty?
I just have one quick question. What percentage of our community uses the aggregate solution?
Kathy might know that.
I actually do not have that number, but I can get it to you. But typically, with the opt-out program, we get about 90% of the residents to participate.
Okay, thank you.
I did want to mention, though, if we, once we execute, if, before we execute, if we can't beat the Duke's price to compare, then we will recommend that the residents go back to Duke until the market is favorable for the residents to save money.
Correct.
Any other comments? Okay, then, do I hear a motion with respect to the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Right, is there any further discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, the motion carries. So next up is a resolution designating April 20th to 26th, 2025, as Volunteer Week in the City of Wyoming. So I'll turn it over to you, Rusty, any comment?
Again, we just want to recognize Wyoming, in my opinion, and what I always tell the community when asked what makes, or other people, what makes Wyoming so special, I think it is the volunteers for the community. And we have so many volunteer efforts within the community. And April gives us an opportunity to support our volunteers. One of the things council's doing is recognizing those boards and commissions, the volunteers, with cookies at their different meetings and recognizing them also on our social media posts. So again, this is an opportunity to recognize and thank our volunteers for the city of Wyoming.
So do I hear a motion with respect to the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? So having been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, the motion carries. And I will now read our proclamation, our resolution, designating April 20th to April 26th, 2025, as Volunteer Week in the City of Wyoming. Whereas, the character and quality of life of our community is determined to a large and significant part by the volunteer efforts of so many people who despite ever-increasing demands on their time, continue to demonstrate a strong commitment to our community by their service. And whereas, all residents of Wyoming receive the measurable benefits of this volunteer effort in support of the arts, education, public safety, sports, senior and youth activities, historical and architectural programs, and the many other community endeavors which create a unique and enhanced quality of life. And whereas, the Council of the City of Wyoming, in conjunction with National Volunteer Week, wishes to extend its sincere appreciation and to recognize these efforts and accomplishments. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wyoming, that this resolution, which pays tribute to the services rendered by the volunteers of our community, be adopted and a copy be spread upon the minutes of the council. And be it further resolved, that the week of April 20th to April 26th, 2025, be designated as Volunteer Week in the City of Wyoming, Ohio, passed unanimously in the council chambers of the City of Wyoming, Ohio, this 21st day of April to 2025. Thank you. Okay, so next up is renewal of liquor permits. So we're going from volunteers to liquor permits. I'll turn that over to you, Rusty.
Okay, so this is an annual thing that the Division of Liquor Control asks the community, just whether we want to have a hearing on any of our liquor permits. So these are renewed each year. And again, the police department, or the police chief, looks at all of the past year, the different areas, the different entities that have liquor permits, just to make sure that they are operating the way they should, and all of them are. And the chief has done a report to that, so it's our recommendation that you renew the liquor permits.
I move to approve the renewal of the liquor permits?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? The one point I would make is, personally, I'm an investor in one of the holders of the liquor permits, so I'll abstain from this one, from this vote. Any other discussion? Okay. Having been moved and seconded to not object to request a hearing on the annual renewal of the liquor permits, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Abstain?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Greenhouse?
Yes.
Abstain. So the motion carries. Next is a request to change membership on an issued liquor permit for 518 Wyoming Avenue. Would you give us some background?
Yes, so what this is, is anytime, so for example, W Lounge was the operating at 518 Wyoming Avenue. And it's typical, when a restaurant changes hands, that it's typical for the liquor permit to also change hands. But a new application process has to be gone through. And so this is part of that process of changing that membership or liquor license from the previous owners of W Lounge to the new owners of, at 518 Wyoming Avenue. And again, as part of that process, a background check is done by the police chief, who has done that background check. And it would be our recommendation that you, that we're supportive of the liquor permit and do not, and do not need a hearing.
All right, so do I hear a motion to confirm no hearing on the change in membership for the liquor permit at 518 Wyoming Avenue is requested?
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to confirm that no hearing on the change in membership for the liquor permit at 518 Wyoming Avenue is requested, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion carries. So next up is the first quarter financial report, and I turn it over to Jeremiah Cotto.
Good evening. So tonight I do have the first quarter financial summary.
I gotta change the microphones, but now we're good. Yes, I'll drive.
Move on to the next. So the first few slides will highlight the city's general fund. So in the first quarter of 2025, the general fund, we received 3.9 million in revenue. As you can see, the majority of that revenue is in real estate and income tax receipts, and I'll come back to that in a second, some highlights. Local government fund, 43,000 charges for services. The majority of that is our paramedic EMS billing, permits, the majority building permits, core costs. And then we had interest earnings in the general fund of 121,000 in the first quarter of the year. of the year. And again, we still have some of the bond funds that we have invested, so those generated, they're not in this slide, but they generate about $72,000 in interest. So overall, this, in the first quarter, we generated about 221,000 in interest, 121,000 allocated to the general fund. Then we have other revenue. Rusty, if you want to move on. You can see about approximately 93% of the general fund revenue is income tax and property tax receipts. Next slide. Total expenditures in the general fund of just under 3.3 million. Police department, other operating expenses and public works accounted for about 54% of the expenditures in the general fund. And public works, a big portion of the expenditures is the Rumpke contract for garbage and recycling. And other operating expenses includes the city's liability insurance, workers' comp premium, software maintenance for the different softwares that the city utilizes on a daily basis. And then, and transfers, transfers out, we had 889,000 in transfers, some of those to the capital improvement fund, to our health life insurance fund. If you want to move on. And again, like I said, about 54% of the expenditures are in police, police public works and other operating costs. You can move on, Rusty. So to give you a few highlights, so income tax receipts through the first quarter of the year were down by eight and a half percent compared to 2024. So 2024 was really an all-time high in income tax receipts of about 8.1 million. We budgeted 7.3 million in 2025, and we are on target to reach the budgeted amount for 2025. My estimate, based on the data I have right now, is we'll be somewhere between the budget and where we were last year. Property tax receipts are on target for the budget. Last year, we totaled 4.6 million in property tax receipts, and we're on target for that number. I already mentioned transfers out. And as you can see, we're about right on target for our expenditures in the first quarter of the year. So you can move on, Rusty. The next slide highlights the recreation fund, and really the majority of the activity in, the recreation fund occurs in the second and third quarters. So revenue of 378,000 was, I think it's about $1,500 less than, than it was the first quarter of last year, so it's really right on target. The next slide, the expenditures of 324,000. Again, those are on target for our budgeted amount for recreation, and there's nothing unusual at this point. You can continue, Rusty. Did add a slide just to show you the, the $10 million in bond anticipation notes that were issued last year. For the road projects, we expended 312,000. That's on design and engineering services. And water ban expenses through the first quarter is about 115,000. To give you comparison, we've had some of the, some additional engineering expenses, and also some construction that started. So we've spent, at this point, over a million now of, of the bond funds, and we're on target to spend those dollars down as needed. This slide highlights our capital improvement fund and our waterworks capital improvement fund. As you can see, we expended 123,000 in our capital improvement fund. Part of that for the Wyoming Lockland Gateway, the dog park, 56,000, and the majority of the, the dog park expenditures should be, really should be wrapped up by the end of the second quarter. Civic center updates of 13,800, and then debt service. And the waterworks capital improvement fund, at this point, the only thing we've spent dollars on is debt service that occurred in January. Our water revenue fund, you can see revenue of 526,000, and expenditures of 368,000. Expenditures are basically flat, and revenue is on target for what was budgeted for 2025, based upon our increase in our water rate and our projections of the other revenue. And you can move on, Rusty. Last slide I have is the street construction and state highway funds. You can see the revenue and expenses for both of those. The state highway, the street construction fund is all really, streetlights, snow removal throughout the year. Some of those expenses are some of the leaf pickup, the labor that is incurred to do that is, is charged to this fund. State highway fund is specific, again, to Springfield Pike. And again, it's streetlights, snow removal, and maintenance that's done on Springfield Pike. And that should be it. Any questions from anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremiah.
So it's recommended that city council receive the report. Do I hear a motion with respect to the report?
Motion to receive the report?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to receive the report, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, next, this is the first reading of the ordinance amending the hours of operation of the designated outdoor refreshment area in the City of Wyoming, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Rusty, will you give some background?
Yes, so what we're doing here is the DORA, the designated outdoor refreshment area has been a huge success in Wyoming. And when it was put in action, the restaurants, it was looked at as they were dinner restaurants and into the evening. But what we've now found is, including Gilligan's that has opened up there, have lunchtime service. And so what we're doing is changing the hours of the DORA to match what the restaurants are in the area. And so that's to include lunch service. So people will be able to have lunch and take that out of the green, or any other part of the, within the DORA. It just expands the hours to include the lunch service. And the reason we're doing it as an emergency, again, is we'd like, we would like the restaurants to be able to take advantage of this now, as the summer starts to, or spring, I would say, and then summer. So we'd like to have it go into effect now. So that's what this is about.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Rusty? Okay. So it's recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The motion carries. So we will now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll? It takes an affirmative vote of five for passage.
Yes.
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 Yes. The motion carries. And next, this is the first reading of the ordinance amending the personnel ordinance and declaring an emergency. Can I give some background?
Yeah, so again, our personnel ordinance really identifies all the roles within the city, from city manager down to meter readers, crossing guards, all of the roles. It sets salaries and pay ranges, hourly wages. So right now, what we'd like to do to the personnel ordinance is add a position. Recently, our medical director has worked with the fire chief to identify some help to our paramedic service and making sure that we can have a paramedic service that's online or in service as much as possible. So we're creating a position, firefighter EMT position, and this will allow that position to assist, to make sure that we have our paramedics in service more often. So to do that, we need to add this position to the personnel ordinance with the pay range. And the reason we're doing that as an emergency, again, is to have it be in effect immediately so that it can start helping with the challenges we have right away.
Any questions? Okay. So it's recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? So having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. The motion carries. We will now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, would the clerk please call the roll? And it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage.
Yes.
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 Yes. The motion carries. Does anyone have any new business not otherwise on the agenda? Then we come to the time of miscellaneous, and tonight I start with Jody.
All right. I just have a couple of things. The first one is, I just wanted to thank Councilman Hoffman for his service. He's added a lot to our group and our camaraderie, value, intellect, opinion. It's been really great having him, so, you know, he will be missed, and I'd like to just thank him for his service, while also encouraging anyone to apply for this role. Not only are we really fun, you know, we work well together, and you can add a lot of value, and so I would just encourage folks to consider applying for this role and giving back to the community. And I'm sure that any one of us would be happy to answer any questions about our experiences. And the other thing I just wanted to comment on is just continue to kind of commend our community on resiliency. You know, we had a vandalism issue at the dog park, and within 24 hours, it was fixed, and it's the, kind of the cooperation, the commitment to, you know, being a community that really shines in Wyoming. And so, you know, resiliency is a key factor right now in a lot of communities, and I'm glad that we have that here, so yay. Thank you.
Dan?
All right. That was a good report. So I just want to thank Ms. Thacker and Ms. Igo for coming down today. That was really great. But also, I really want to thank Rusty and Melissa for, A, for you having that rapport with Ms. Igo, right? That was important for you to have that relationship with her. And Rusty, this wouldn't have been on our radar, had it not been on our radar over a year ago. So I think they've come a long way in terms of listening to our city. So I'm a little surprised by some of the nuances of what they proposed. I didn't realize it wouldn't be all fenced in, but okay. I didn't want to weigh in on that any further. That was obviously a hot potato, so, but nonetheless, they've obviously listened and come a long way on it. So thanks for establishing that rapport with that group of people. That's all.
Thank you. Cindy?
I wanted to share, I, from, and, and I have heard that we all know that Wyoming is a true city of the city of, they're coming, and I want to hear that all the cities that are true citizens, that we've come to be right here, in the heart of it all, and, and I'll be, and, and, and.
Awesome. Thank you. Chris?
Nothing new for me?
Okay.
Thank you.
April?
Just wanted to thank the community for participating in Upcycle Day. I think everything with the new location, and really want to thank the Environmental Stewardship Committee Commission, as well as all of the volunteers that day, and then the vendors collecting items, and even some of the vendors that came out despite the rain to sell recycled items as well. I just look forward to kind of building the momentum on that for the future. I also want to just encourage more people to just think about the items that they're recycling and can recycle. I know we're, we're looking at the data and the numbers. It seems like our numbers that are going to Rumpke seem to be increasing, while the numbers that are actually going to recycling has been decreasing. And so I just encourage every household to just do, kind of, look at what you're doing on a weekly basis and what you can do. I think every, if every family took one little step to recycle just a little bit more, I think we could have a huge impact as a community together. So look out for more information, just to educate more people about the recycling efforts that we have, and including composting. You can drop off all of your food waste in, over at Oak Park, and I think that is a wonderful program. And I know it took our family just a little bit of like, what do I do with this stuff? And how do I, if I'm inviting friends over, how do I encourage them to also like compost? And so just all of those little things help out in the long run for our community and environment. And then I know we got a little preview from Emily of all the things that are going to be happening in the Village Green, and I am just super excited for our community to be able to experience that together this summer, and I'm looking forward to a really great programming calendar in regards to what's happening, not only at the Village Green, but just in our community. We had welcomed a Boy Scout den prior to this meeting, and all of them really said that they were super excited about the pool and the rec center activities especially. So that's it.
Cool. Thank you. I first want to say, I want to thank Public Works. I love this time of year when I see trees going, being planted all over the city, and I think I have the number right, that it's 118 this year. So that's an enormous amount of work, but that, that's, that's, that's a present to Wyoming 20, 30, 40 years from now, and so we really appreciate it. And then I also wanted to recognize and thank Grant. So thank you too. I think he's had a unique voice. He always comes with things as being, with having a love for Wyoming and wanting what's best for Wyoming. He's not afraid to give his opinion, and I think that's one of the things I appreciate about him, but he also listens well, so he's going to be very missed on council. So just wanted to recognize him. Okay. We have no members to excuse. And so we will now have executive session. Under section 121.03B3 of the codified ordinances of the City of Wyoming, council may adjourn to executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation or other legal matter requiring the attention of city council. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Moved. Second.
Having been moved and seconded to adjourn to executive session, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? Okay, council is adjourned to executive session at 8:12. Thanks, everybody. Good night.